To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Ms. Benson won't be here today. She's not going to be able to make this meeting. So we could start. Any public comments? Any board comments? All righty. We can go right into, we have a public hearing at 6:30 for 6:15, 6:17, Lemonster Road, scenic road application. Okay, so I opened up the session. This is my first public hearing as chair.
Okay.
All right, so I opened up the meeting. We average highs, did our regular postings. I read this right here, right Toby?
Yes, well, first of all, you need to take us into the public hearing out of the regular session.
Out of the regular, into the public?
Public, yes.
Okay, so we will move out of our regular meeting into the public hearing for the 6:15, 6:17, Lemonster Road, scenic road application. Would someone make that motion?
I mean that we go into the public hearing session for 6:15, 6:17, Lemonster Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Aye.
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 And aye. Okay. And the Lunenburg, I forgot my peepers, I apologize. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on November 25, 2013 at 6:35 PM in the Joseph Bellotta Meeting Room, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. to hear and review a request to separate an existing common driveway into two driveway entrances to the existing residence at 6:15, map 111 parcel 0005 and 617, map 111 parcel 0006, Lemonster Road. Under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15(c), scenic road designation improvements finds applicants are Ryan and Amy Lazaro at 6:17, Lemonster Road and Steve and Christine Randall at 6:15, Lemonster Road, Lunenburg, Mass. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office, 960 Massachusetts Ave., Lunenburg, Mass. 01462. And Jesse, are you gonna present for them? Go ahead, welcome.
Jesse Johnson, David Ross Associates. So we're here before you tonight for an application for scenic road driveway modification. And the nature of the project and why we're here is we have two neighbors that share a common driveway that straddles their common property line off of Lemonster Road. The residents at 6:15, the Randalls, also have a onsite business with their residence. So that generates more traffic than a typical residence would. And in the interest of public safety, they thought it'd be a good idea to separate the driveways at the curb cut and separate the driveways up to the first house, Lazaro's house at 6:17, so that the Lazaros could have their children play on the driveway and not have to worry about anyone coming into their driveway other than family or maybe friends or something like that. And then also, it's a, obviously, it's a relief for the property owners and the business owners at 6:15. They don't have to worry about any children playing at the entrance to their, their business and their residence. So that was really the driving force behind it. To get the separation at the curb cut, have the driveways parallel each other, and then as it gets towards the back of the property, it'll join back up with its existing layout. So we're before you tonight to show you the design for the layout and some of the impacts within the right-of-way. We've tried to, obviously, taken into consideration most things that you would for a scenic road application, which are minimize your disturbance of trees or stone walls, grading, and we think we did that. So I'll show you the plan and show you what we did. The existing driveway is shown here in gray.
Can you take the mic with you, Jesse?
And also, I submitted colored photos in the application. I just wanted to know for everybody to give you a reference point as well. But the existing driveway shown here in the gray, coming off of Lemonster Road, travels up right here to where the brown is, peels off to 6:17, and then it continues up to gravel and then comes and continues back to the Randalls property. So what we're proposing is just a slight shift to the south, if you will, for a driveway that will be created for the Lazaros, that'll come back and join into the existing layout. And then the, the gravel that exists from the end of the pavement to here will be removed to create a physical separation. So they'll have a standalone driveway with the loop back out. The Randalls will have their driveway installed just up next to the property line right here to create some separation, come up, follow the property line, and then connect back in again to their existing layout. To do that, we would have to remove one cluster of a 12-inch and an 8-inch ash right here. It would go between some existing trees, but that's the only tree removal that would be required within the right-of-way to accomplish the new driveway and to even shift the other one to the farther south. There would be some stone wall removal in this area, and then also replacement over here to frame back the new driveway, but that stone wall is out of the right-of-way. It's just into their property, both of theirs. And then also, you'll see here in green, we did locate some isolated wetlands. We met Matt Morrow from Conservation On Site. We actually even filed a request for determination, and they gave us a negative determination saying that it's a non-jurisdictional wetland, local and state. So they, they had no issue with us proposing to go right through it, grade as necessary to create the driveway. We did also create a small splash pool, if you will, that will take the runoff coming down the driveway and detain it ever so slightly, hopefully infiltrate it, and if there is any excess, it would continue on the path that it currently goes, which is down to another wetland pocket to the south. So there actually is a low area that would be right in this area that would prevent any runoff that comes onto the road. So we wouldn't be increasing any runoff into the right-of-way. We feel that we've minimized an impact by lessening the tree cutting, taking care of drainage, and obviously improve safety significantly. And I can take any questions you might have on that.
Go ahead, let's start with Matthew.
The, the plan shows the, the proposed driveway width is 13 feet wide, and it also shows the road stone wall stopping at the edges of that, but it indicates a 28-foot plus or minus removal of stone wall, which is more than twice the width.
That was for... Also, right here, there's a portion of stone wall that will have to come out.
Okay.
So I added up that portion of the stone wall plus this one over here for a total of 28 feet.
So you're gonna remove it to replace it?
Yes, we have to remove it to install both driveways, and then we're gonna just shift that same material over to frame it back. So we'll have it, the entrance to both driveways have a little bit of stone wall on both sides.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a couple, just so that I make sure that we're, we're all covered here. I know this is mostly about the scenic bylaw and stuff, but just from an overall perspective, I'm assuming that both of these lots have the appropriate frontage?
Yes.
Okay, because I couldn't tell from the plan and not knowing what residence they're in.
Sure.
Are they in Residence A or are they outlined? Do you recall?
I don't recall that.
Okay. Well, the only reason I'm asking is we get further down the road here, and there's an issue with the overall driveway length and stuff. I'd like to know that.
Oh, sure.
Kind of now before we, before we get too far in, right?
Okay.
So do you happen to have any idea of what the length of the new driveway going back to the Randall property would be, and is it within the context of our zoning bylaw?
Steve, can you know approximately how long your, your driveway is from your residence out?
The shared portion or our private portion?
You're talking about the total driveway length from...
From the new, for the new portion, yeah.
It'll essentially be the s-
The same. The same. What's here now is this, this is what's here now in the gray, and that's just gonna shift over there essentially. So your only increased length would be maybe this radius right here.
Okay.
So that, that's the only change in the overall length of that driveway is about 40 to 50 feet from what it stands now. It's just a shift in it.
Okay. I just want to make sure so there's no issues further down the road.
Sure, okay.
Okay.
Get 300 feet to there.
I think, we're okay then, I think. Okay, I'm good.
So Matthew, are you all done?
No, I have another question.
Okay.
You mentioned public safety, but the, the safety issues that you brought up were only for the two lot owners. My, my, my thought on public safety is that one driveway with multiple cars coming out is more safe for the public than two driveways. Just my thought. How would you feel about that as an engineer?
It's not uncommon to have two driveways this close to each other, especially in a residential neighborhood. I, I understand your concern, but I, I still value the, the safety of over, what they'll accomplish onsite with having the separation, with the kids being able to play in the driveway versus established area where cars come in and out now, being able to have the sight distance that they need. The sight lines are good both directions, stopping sight distance coming up and down the road is good. I, I think that, I think that that outweighs the, the safety factor that we're gonna improve upon versus maybe one that would be increased.
Okay. Thank you.
Damon?
I'm all set.
I'm all set as well.
And I'm all set as well.
I have one more question.
Sure.
What about the alternative of expanding the existing, or widening the existing driveway rather than creating all this new disturbance? Was that investigated?
We, we did look at that. We felt just the separation of the driveways, anytime we could get it again, because you have two different common, you have two different owners sharing a common driveway. It just creates issues with maintenance as well in the wintertime. It's much easier if everybody has responsibility for their own driveway from the, not only a safety standpoint but also long-term maintenance. We felt it was a cleaner way to do it, and also if anybody wanted to sell their house down the road, it would also make that issue a little bit easier. Widening it could help, but again, I, I feel with the impacts that we're doing being lessened, I still feel this is the best alternative for, for both homeowners.
Okay. Do we have any question or comments from the audience? Any comments by proponents? Okay, and do we have any questions by opponents?
I do have one more question, if I may.
Sure, Mr. Bicasa.
Is there any particular reason why when you were putting in the new driveway that you just didn't make it so that it was all self-contained on the Randall property? Because it looks like the back portion is still gonna require an easement over the property of the Lazaros, correct?
Yeah, there is actually an existing easement there already in place. So this was kind of the balance of lessening in the impact but also creating the safety improvement. So the thought was even, you'll notice at the front, it would have been, it would have been ideal if we could have to get this driveway completely on their property. Here's the property line right here. So they still have to straddle the property, the Lazaros do. They can't even get, get their own driveway completely on their property, because if we wanted to do that, we would have been cutting down some more trees in the right-of-way, and we would have been removing more wall, and we would have been cutting closer to this wetland down here further to the south. So the thought was to minimize the disturbance in this area by just shifting it over, getting some separation, and kind of just realizing that the driveway as it follows back behind them wasn't worth all the time, money, that would have, and disturbance to be invested in doing that.
Okay. And like you said, you're gonna break, break it off right at the back there with the Lazaro's driveway?
Right, they'll create the separation by taking this little gravel piece out right here. It's pavement stopping here where the, the dark shade goes to the lighter, and then they'll just, they'll meet back up with the new gravel right there.
Okay, so the, the net gain is, is that the Lazaros get additional functional utility out of using their driveway for themselves and this, and then maximizing safety for both properties?
Exactly.
So I assume that there's gonna be an easement swap from the front for the Lazaros to the back, and the existing one to the back for the Randalls stays the same?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm good.
Another question. The, the acceptability of the soil to, is that a detention basin or is it...
It's a small depression. It's only gonna be about a foot or two deep. Just something that'll catch the runoff, because what you have now is that wetland area that's kind of functioning that way. So we wanted to replace that or supplement it, and we felt it'd be better served down at the bottom, catch everything so that there's a little drain back coming off of Lemonster Road, but then also catching anything coming off of the driveway, and at least slowing it down, giving it a chance to infiltrate in. And then if there's any overflow, it'll go over the Lazaro driveway and, and continue down towards lawn and then the wetlands eventually.
So there's no subsurface overflow under the driveway?
Yeah, there's, exactly. No, there's not.
Are we all set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So there's no other questions?
No.
Now Toby, I just have a procedural question. Am I closing this? And then at the next meeting...
We, we could exercise, we could exercise to vote on this now if we want, and that's what I would do, is I would make a motion that we would approve the request for, the change for the scenic road at 6:15 and 6:17, Lemonster Road.
I would second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I really hate to, to have any power over people's use of their own property, but the, the scenic road was well in, is in effect well before the property was even subdivided probably. I don't see any reason that the same effect could not be gained by using the same entrance and looping it up and around to give you the separated driveways, and the entrance would be the only problem, well separated from the house. I just don't see that there's a necessity for this. But that, that's just my input. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I would just like to say that I appreciate the reusing and relocating of the stone wall and making your best effort to retain the historic nature of the road. It's positive for me. Like to see that.
So I'm good.
All in favor?
Starting with you, Matthew?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so...
Now you can close.
I would now make a motion, accept a motion to close the public hearing and go back into our regularly scheduled planning board meeting.
I make the motion to come out of the public hearing and return to our regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. I'm just looking for minutes. I'm going through Marion's pile looking for minutes.
All right.
Minutes.
Hell-tail green cover sheet.
There we go. Okay, so first we have a minute approval. I would look for a motion to accept the minutes of 10/24/13.
Motion to approve the minutes of 10/20, 28/13.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then we would do it that, that you have, Nathan. There's a second set of executive session that we would need to read, going back to 9/9/13.
A motion to approve the...
We have to read those first. Those are the ones we, we can't send via company, intra-company mail.
Gotcha.
So if you want to read those and then pass them on.
Very good.
Be just a minute while we're reading the executive session minutes.
Thank you.
How are you? Good.
Do this for the executive session.
No, that's not the executive session.
Oh, okay, okay. Yes, thank you.
If those are the first set, I need to initial. Thank you, Nathan. Thought it was a great idea to hyphenate my name till I have to sign it everywhere.
Oh, yeah. Definitely.
Yeah, I thought she did a good job. I called Marion about getting a bylaw for the...
Town meeting?
Yeah, well, we would want two, one for the moratorium and then one in our regular rules and regs about people that are going their own, that they do have to register with the police department, fire department.
Okay.
Because remember, she said you can't include it in marijuana.
The items that we discussed with...
Bylaw, but you could do it in your own rules and regs, that if someone is to open, that they need to register because they, like the house that just burned down in Boston, because they did their own electrical.
Now that we've all read the executive session minutes, I'd make a motion to approve the executive minutes of September 9, 2013.
I've not read them.
No.
Who has them?
Do I need to sign them first or...
No, they'll have to come back for signature. You can make your, your motion, Mr. Bicasa.
Make the motion that we approve the executive session minutes of 9/19, 2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And they'll back to you for signature. Okay, going right along this while we're signing those. Matthew, MJTC.
There has been no meeting since our last meeting.
Okay. MRPC, we had, the scheduled monthly meeting is tomorrow evening, but we had a annual dinner with all the people from MRPC. They had a couple vendors, and then all the planning directors were invited, and our planning director sent it out to the board, and Matthew and, and Nathan joined me as well. It was a great evening. Kay Doyle from Copman and Page did a whole presentation on the medical marijuana, which is what Nathan and I were talking about as you were reading the minutes. And I'll let Matthew and Nathan talk about that as well. But two things that came out of it, because I know Toby, you had a question about the moratorium.
Mm-hmm.
And the moratoriums via the state are only good till December of 2014. Any town that puts a moratorium in, the longest they could go is December. So if we put it on the ballot for January 7th, we would only be able to do it till the 31st of December 2014. And then there's a specific name for it. I don't recall it off my head. I can look in here. Is a person that, due to hardships or whatnot, cultivates the marijuana in their home, their... Thank you. And right now, they don't have to register at the police, and you can't put it in the moratorium, your marijuana moratorium, that they would put it in or register with the police to have the, the marijuana growing in their home, which really isn't a good idea because there's a lot of electricity that goes with growing marijuana and the lighting and all the things. You just saw the house that burnt down in Boston due to the electrical with the marijuana plants. So she said what you can do is in your town regs and rules and regs, have a bylaw that states anybody that is growing marijuana in the town of Lunenburg needs to register with the fire department, police department, so they know who in, in the town is legally authorized to do that. So that was something I had brought back to Marion to call Kay Doyle and get more information on, on how we would do that, and maybe in January, going to the town meeting with two moratorium, two warrants, one for the moratorium, and then one to just make sure that we have a, a rule in there that anybody that would be doing this in their, their home would have to register with the fire and police department, the town, so they know who, who the registered growers are. So, and I don't know if Matthew and Nathan want to talk about what they got out of it or...
Yeah, the biggest, the, one of the biggest, there are a few, the two, two biggest takeaways for me. One was the, something I didn't anticipate, which was the intersection of whatever we might want to do for site, around ultimately citing clinics and providing a regulatory framework for what parts of town and whatnot, and the intersection of that and the state laws permitting special commercial uses, permitting commercial uses on agricultural land. Ms. Doyle specifically talked about her current interpretation. There's no case law for this yet, specifically with marijuana citing, but her expectation would be if, you know, that even if we were to restrict the citing of these, these nonprofit dispensary entities, even if we were to restrict them to a specific zoning district or overlay or what have you, that her interpretation of the state law would be that agriculture, farms designate, you know, farm, properties designated as farms would be able to open them under their, the powers they're granted for commercial uses. Now, it's, you know, you know, I mean, we've heard Joel talk about his interpretation of similar things before. This looks like an unintended consequence to me, and I'd be curious to see if that did go to state court, if they would really uphold the, you know, the farm commercial use over the town's power to regulate this type of thing. It's, you know, it's kind of, kind of getting to the point where it's kind of counterproductive. So I, I don't, that was a pretty interesting thing.
Yeah. And for me, it was the federal that Matthew's always talked about, state versus federal, and that the federal can still go in, and, and federal trump state. So the federal's not, if you're breaking the law in the federal's mind, then you could still get in trouble with the federal government. So, which Matthew has been saying since, since the beginning of this.
Absolutely. At the same time, it's a town and it's a, you have to listen to the state. He has to do it the state. She also made that, so yeah, it's a complicated line to walk.
Yeah. So, and there's only 35 that they're giving out, and they have over 100 and something applicants. Is that what the number was?
Yes. And they reserve the right to expand the number of licenses as to meet...
The needs.
Demand or need or whatever.
So it was, I thought it was very informative, and I'm glad I went.
Is, is there only one type of license or is there two types of license? Is there one to be a dispensary, where you're dispensing it, and is there another license for a grow?
It seems to me it's like a one, it's a one, there's a... It seems to me it's like a one, it's a one, there's a one type of entity. They presume, they presumably, they distribute and grow. There's regulations regarding how much of what they grow needs to be directly distributed by them, versus there's a limited provision to allow exchange of product between these registered entities.
And a distributor can only distribute, a grower can only distribute to three distributors.
That are allied, are aligned.
That are aligned.
I, I took away a whole bunch of more confusion. I mean, there were, there was, there was a great deal of explanation, and, and a lot of things were clarified, but I, listening to her and reading back through it, it just seemed to bring up more questions. It didn't seem like the, it seemed like they focused on regulating the dispensaries, but they didn't see, there seemed to be next to nothing about regulation of, of the growing facilities.
And there's, I did have a copy that Marion's gonna have. You could go right on Copelman and Page's website, and the whole presentation's there right on the website. Or we can have Marion scan it in, but it's probably just as quick to go, right on Copelman and Page's website. It's public, it's public right on the website. And again, it was very, very informative. All right, that's all I had on MRPC. Then we have school building committee, Nathan. What's going on with the schools?
Well, pretty big news there. The MSBA approved Lunenburg's schematic design to move forward.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. So that means it's ready to go to the special town meeting in January for a vote by the members of town of Lunenburg. There's a lot of information out there now in various places about it. There's, there may be a mailing about it as well, but obviously you can go to the school committee, or the, the school website, the town website, there's the links to the special website, there's a Facebook page, you name it. You should be able, there's stuff in the library, so I think there's plenty of information out there. I think the thing that'll be on the warrant is probably, you know, the, the vote to proceed with it and to do, vote to support the borrowing, which is going to require a two-thirds majority of the town, because it involves borrowing. And then if, I, I don't, I mean, I think, I don't, there's going to be then the, the vote to approve the tax increase related to the, you know, servicing the borrowing and whatnot, and that would come, I think, within a week or two after special town meeting, if it passes at town meeting. So, so the, the town's got a, you know, a pretty exciting choice and opportunity to make before them for, you know, going ahead with a new facility with strong financial support from the state. I think the breakdown, I, the data's online, I don't want to, I'll probably butcher it if I try to do it, but it was like, you know, 49 and a half, 50 and a half, I think, with the town bearing the 50 and a half, and the state bearing the 49 and a half. The, the reason, the only reason the funding level is below 50%, or actual, in terms of, it's kind of complicated, but according to the funding formula, we got like 59 or 60%. But there's a cap on cost per square footage that is covered by that funding, and if you look at what school projects have been built in Massachusetts, it's, it's very difficult to achieve that cost per square foot, funding target in the current construction environment. So practically speaking, it's, for all practical purposes, call it 50/50, and I think that works out to, I don't even want to quote it, because I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's, it's a, you know, it's like 36 million each way, roughly speaking, I think. And a lot of data on the website, the very informative pamphlet they put together, which I think may get mailed out, so, you know, good, should be a lot of good information for people to review and take in and, and think about as they, you know, as they, you know, decide what they want to do at town meeting, so.
No, they've, the communication, it's everywhere, and they're doing the coffee class at the library, as you said, and so, really, everybody should be very educated on it.
Yep.
Because they've worked very hard to make sure that it was communicated out there. Any questions for Nathan on the school committee? Did they decide if it was 20 or 30 years? Did this, did, I know they had a survey going, the money for the school, if we were going to take a 20-year or a 30-year loan?
Yeah, it's a great question. I, as far as I know, I haven't heard a decision. In fact, in the pamphlet they're printing, I think they, they break it down to like what the monthly tax increase, or, sorry, what the annual tax increase will be for the median value homeowner, and they present data for both 20- and 30-year borrowing. So I don't know that they've made a decision on that yet, or how they're gonna do that.
Okay, great.
I have one question. Has, has the, the thought of consideration ever come to not burdening the entire town, but only burdening those with children who actually go to school?
So, so you're talking about, in terms of the funding for Lunenburg Public Schools?
Well, I mean, there's, there's a lot of elderly. I mean, there's, there's a great amount of persons beyond childbearing, rearing, rearing years, a lot of single adults, a lot of unwed people. I just, I just don't understand why the entire town bears the burden for just the people with kids.
Sure, so, so a couple, a couple points I would make in this. So to answer your question, fundamentally, there hasn't been a fundamental, this, this has been, this whole project's been about how to fund a replacement for the Lunenburg School, that it hasn't been an effort to fundamentally rethink the way that education is financed in Lunenburg, which is kind of the point you're getting at. And that'd be, it's an interesting conversation, but no, it's not one that's, there, there has been some talk about, you know, there was some discussion about, you know, are there mechanisms that could be used to, you know, deal with certain hardship impacts and that kind of thing, but I don't, I don't, most of the focus, the energy's been on other things, and I, I'm not aware of any kind of changes in Lunenburg, you know, how Lunenburg finances education or taxes, the population that would, are associated with this effort right now.
Well, I guess it comes about, more fundamental to me, this is about the common good. You can't not have to participate in the cost of building the new school, and then reap the benefit that you might see in the increase in overall property values of having a new facility with an outstanding school systems. Because school systems do have an impact on property values within the community, so you can't have it one way or the other. So it's all for the common good.
It, it all comes, the senior center, you know, people with kids are paying for the seniors, it's, it's all a group, group effort. I went to St. Bernice, but still paid the same as a Lunenburg resident would, it's all...
But it's not the same, though, everybody gets old.
Yeah, but...
Okay, that's enough, I guess. Thanks for answering the question.
We had something on the table that would propose to stop that.
That'd be great.
We couldn't figure out how to make it happen.
Oh, my goodness.
My only comment for the school, as far as a planning aspect, is I worry about the unintended consequences of raising the taxes in town to pay for this, because while you're giving the kids a great experience during the years that they're there, it makes it increasingly difficult to move back to this town, or to continue to live in this town, once they graduate from high school. And as a town, we already have a great divide in age, whereas there aren't that many people in town, like myself, who are between 20 and 40, living in this town because of the cost. And I just worry about that consequence, is what, how are they expected to do? Where do they go? They're gonna be living in Fitchburg and Leominster, and then your grandkids are gonna have a whole different school experience to worry about.
That's a good point.
It is a good point.
But thought...
I would suggest we, we keep that thought going as we go into the next year, and, and look at, you know, any kind of, if we consider plant, doing any planning changes around, you know, zoning and, and housing. I'm, I'm thinking particularly around, you know, rental right now, but, but that, there might be, as far as affordable housing goes, that might be something that, yeah, there might be some negative impacts of, you know, increasing the, doing a project that's going to increase tax burden and increase property value, but there might be other things we can do that offset that somewhat.
Something like, as we move forwards, because it isn't a problem that exists in the town now, and I don't want to make it any worse.
Good insight, Damon. Okay, building reuse, Damon.
All right, well, like Nathan said, the whole process is moving along, so hopefully Jamie will be giving a presentation of our findings to the selectmen on December 3rd. That's our plan.
Okay.
So, for anyone interested in our findings, we have all the facts to back everything up. We're really just making suggestions, no decisions. It's up to the board of selectmen in the town to make decisions, but...
Have you prioritized as a committee, how you, as a committee, would like to see it?
Yeah, I guess. It's more of a billing by billing finding, and suggestions billing by billing. It's in no way intended to sugarcoat that we're asking the town to spend a lot of money on a school, but it's to show that we went through the steps and looked at our billings that we have, our billing stock, and make suggestions on the future. So if you're interested in the facts and everything, stay tuned to December 3rd, and Jamie will give you the full presentation.
Perfect. All right, and Marion's not here for capital planning, green community, so we'll go right with the planning director reports. And we have the special town meeting, January 7th, and I think she has a draft...
What time is it on January 7th, is that?
I'm sorry?
What time is it on January 7th?
I think 7 o'clock, Toby.
So it's an evening meeting?
Yes, special town meeting, January 7th. All right, so there's two I'm passing down. Oh, can you grab one for me, Nathan?
Sure, can. Whoops, I need one too, yeah, I didn't grab one, thanks.
Thank you. So, let's see. So the warrant just states, article, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding a current bylaw, section 2.0, entitled 'Definitions, a new subsection 2.1.1.29, entitled 'Medical Marijuana Treatment Center,' and renumber accordingly, or take any other action relative thereto." Section 2.1.1.29, "Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, non, not-for-profit entity, as defined by Massachusetts law only, registered by the Department of Public Health as a registered marijuana dispensary that acquires, cultivates, possesses, processes, including development of related products such as food, what's that, tintages, aerosols, oils, or ointments, transfer, transport, sells, distributes, dispenses, or administers marijuana, product containing marijuana, related supplies, or educational materials to qualify patients or their personal caregivers." And then the next one is the model moratorium warrant article. I don't understand what this first bylaw is.
I think, I don't know, definition, adding the definition to our...
Okay. And then here's the moratorium that would go under it, "To see if the town will vote to amend," I'm not going to read the whole thing out loud.
So is there any action on this?
Well, this is the, we, we said we would read it and see if, if we like this, do we want to tweak it and get it approved for the, to go on the warrant for the January 7th meeting.
Are we doing that tonight, or are we expected to take this away and come back?
No, I think we're doing it tonight, because I, I don't know when the town articles close, but I think it's December 3rd they have to be in. But it doesn't say that the date of the moratorium... Oh, yes, it does, I apologize, through December 31st, 2014, or until such time as the zoning, town adopts the zoning bylaw amended.
Jane, has this been reviewed by Copelman and Page?
That, I don't know if Marion has sent it to them as of yet. I think she got it from them, in all honesty. I think this is who she got the copy from, but I don't want to speak for Marion.
Yeah, it looks good to me. My only concern would be the, uh, as long, if it's all clear with Copelman and Page, I mean, the, the rationale given for the moratorium in this document, which I think is appropriate, I, as long as it's specific enough, you know, it talks about the novel and complex issues, you know, legal planning and public safety issues. It doesn't talk about any specific ones. If that's okay, I'm great with it. That's my one.
All right, well then, what I would say, Toby, is, because Nathan's got that anyway, so it's going to go on our schedule for our next meeting, which would be December 9th. So we could take it, read it, digest it, and then we'll go on it December 9th. And if that doesn't work, Marion will have to let us know, and we'll have to have a quick 15-minute meeting, or go from there.
When does it have to go in?
I, that, I don't know. I, I, they said it on the selectmen's meeting last, last Tuesday. Carrie had stated that, but I can't retain what the exact date was, and I don't want to be misquoted.
Okay. If it needed to go sooner, I mean, I'd be willing to vote for it, and then if we had to amend it, I could amend it.
Yeah, no harm in voting for it, I, I would think.
Because I think even if we were to amend it, I don't think it, it would be majorly different. It would give the, getting it on the warrant would help give people a heads up, so they could think about it.
Toby, what are you thinking down there?
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good with it as it is, because we, if we want to, we can always amend it on town meeting four.
Okay, so I would make a motion to, I would accept a motion to accept the moratorium to go on the town warrant. There might be the one amendment that Marion's going to research for Nathan. Other than that, I would accept a motion.
Do we need to do these one by one, or can we do it in one motion for both articles?
I think we'd have to do one for each article.
I would make a motion to add the definition of a medical marijuana treatment center to the town warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And then we would have a motion for the warrant?
Motion, I make a motion to put the model moratorium, put a moratorium, you know, bylaw for a moratorium onto the warrant, similar to what's here in the model moratorium warrant article.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Great job. Next, we have White Woods. Oh, these are the weekly progress reports. They're installing windows. So nothing new on that. So, White Woods and Emerald Place were just weekly updates that they faxed into Marion every Monday.
Okay.
Then we had 35 Lemons... Then we had 35 Lemmonster Road Building Permit Extension. 35 Lemmonster Road. This is just an FYI, that 35 Lemmonster Road, any bathroom facility, it's from the building, the building Inspector Mike Savageau. And he is, permit expires 6/11/14, extension granted to 10/1/13. So, and she was just FYI-ing us on that.
Are you sure those numbers were...
Are you sure those numbers were right, 10/1/13?
They're probably transposed.
Yes. Right. Permit expires on June 11th, 14.
Oh yeah, so he granted the extension on October 1st, but it, to expire in whatever, yeah, June 14th.
June 14th.
We had a conversation when he, he did extend it, I think, in the board.
I believe we do.
6/15, we already did.
I don't know, I haven't got the answer.
40-hour density bonus payment, which is for tri-town executed contract. And she's got nothing in here, so she might have just been talking now. The checks are in play. That's the 3,000 per unit.
Per unit, yeah.
Okay. And then the solar field, oh, Whitetail Crossing.
Is that about road?
I'm sorry?
Oh, the whitetail thing, is that going to be about the roads?
Whitetail Crossing. White Woods, Emerald Place, Lemmonster Road, solar. She has nothing in here on Whitetail Crossing, and it's empty next to it, so I don't know.
Okay.
What's this here? Jesse Johnson. I wonder if that's the plan he just did tonight?
This is a definitive subdivision?
It's tough trying to figure out what someone else wants to tell you.
Elmwood? Definitive subdivision of Elmwood? Off Elmwood Road?
Is that the two, the driveways, the gentleman that had the...
Oh, this is, this is off Elmwood.
Yeah. That's where Flat Hill Orchards is at the end?
Uh, yes, that's the place. Applicant Michael Crowley, owner Mike, Mark, Mark, you in the... He asked the subdivision plan, is that on the agenda?
Nope.
No, not that I see.
Okay, I'll roll it back up. Tune in next time.
Okay, next time for that, I don't know. All right, and then we're on the solar field, the New Gin Capital, that's passed down when you're done with that. If you could pass that down to the board.
Yeah, absolutely.
Planning Department.
Decommissioning?
Also dated by the church man. All right, so this is just saying that they're the new owners, they own both properties, and they're ready to rock and roll.
And they've contracted someone to do their annual maintenance.
Yeah, to be the O M A. And those are yours to keep.
It's extra.
Sorry, Joanna?
Yes?
I don't, I think this is, this is a specific decommissioning, annual maintenance. This has become a, a new thing in renewable energy.
Yeah.
When it expires, when it's served its purpose, and at the end of the lifetime of it, oftentimes, if there's no decommissioning and maintenance agreement in place, then they can potentially just take what's valuable, salvage it, and leave the majority of everything. I think, I think that's what this is specifically talking about.
Yes, because we said that they had to have a plan for that.
In the directives.
In the directives. The planning board issued directives to them stating that they had to do that.
Yeah, so I mean, this looks, I mean, I don't have the directives in front of me to remember, if this, this seems like it's generally compliant with the spirit of it. I don't remember, I assume it's compliant with the letter, but I wouldn't know without looking at it. The thing is, I, they also, I mean, this doesn't talk about the bonding, but my understanding is they also had to post some kind of bond...
I should hope so.
...to go with, to go with this, and I assume that...
That's through the town.
It's taken care of that, yeah.
And that's through the town. But this was directed by us at the end of the project.
Oh, good.
Gotcha.
All right. The citizen survey, I know Marjorie, Marion doesn't have anything in the folder. Marjorie sent an email, "I've not sat down and looked at the data." Did any of you that could talk about it? I can't talk about it.
I did. I didn't read all of it. It looked like there were like 235 respondents.
Okay.
A little disappointing. That's, that's what, 2%, 2% of the town? It wasn't a surprise to me, the...
What was I doing, I did?
Of those who responded, there was a, there was a general distaste for further development. That was my impression. They didn't, a lot of the respondents, a lot of, I basically just read through the written, and there was a, there were graphs breaking down the responses, and there was also a listing of the individual write-in responses.
Okay.
Which is what I read through probably about half the document, of the first page. Yeah, it just, it just seems like the town's people, well, obviously with the very low respondents, they kind of don't have, they don't seem to be very opinionated that their opinions are going to make much difference, is what I felt when reading through it, but...
Did anybody else read through it yet? Yeah, I didn't. We just got it at 4:35 o'clock, so I didn't have time to sit down and, and look at it. But anybody out there, please, please go online, it's right on the planning website, as well as the town, and, and do the survey, because we really could use the feedback.
Is it still available?
I think so. We, why, did we have a date we were shutting it down?
Well, I don't know, I don't know why they would have tabulated the result if it was still up and running.
I just thought this was a high mark for her to read to us where we're at so far.
Oh, okay.
That's what I, I thought. I don't know if that, if we have a deadline and it's over.
I don't know.
I don't know on that. We'll have to check with Marion on that. Any other questions on that for now?
None for me.
All right, MRPC meeting, we went last week. Would anybody like to talk about that? That was the...
Site plan review.
Yes. The site plan review. Toby, would you like to see what they presented? They did a lot of the paisanos, construction over in Lemmonster on 117 by the gondola. How did you guys like it? I thought it was good. I enjoyed, I enjoyed it.
Yeah, it was interesting. It was interesting too to, to hear what some of the representatives from the other towns talk here about their experiences. In general, you know, some of them were, you know, similar to ours, some were a little different. There were a few comments which made me feel good about some of the things we had in place in our bylaws that were protecting us against some of the problems that some of them were experiencing. And I don't know, I think, and then some of them were experiencing things that I think, you know, I don't know, they were talking about, the guy from Marlboro was talking about some of the development that going on there, and some of the decision-making around that, and it sounded like something, yeah, similar kind of frame of mind we would be in, in a similar situation. So yeah, it was a neat opportunity to, to meet with people from, in doing a similar job in different towns, and talk about things related to site plan review.
I was surprised. It wasn't what I had expected. My engineering mind, I see site plan review, and I say, "Oh, they're going to show us how to look at plans." But that wasn't it at all. It was very informative. I learned a good number of things about the requirements of the procedure, which I need to know, which is good. I took good notes, and I can review them.
Yeah, I did too. I, I always enjoy hearing other, as you said, Nathan, other towns to, it gives you, okay, it's not just Leinburg. You know, that, that everybody's having those same state issues, same regulatory issues, and same development issues. So it's very nice.
The one thing I did notice was the guy from Lowell, Emily's talking about open space in the site plan, how they only count spaces that are at least 15 by 15 as usable open space. Might come up in the future as, I don't, we just kind of count open spaces as open space, right? I'd have to check our, that's a great question. That was really interesting, their definitions around, they had a couple categories of opens.
Tell Toby that one, he'd like that one, open space.
So, for as far as, they had landscaped open space, which would be like your five-foot landscape strip or whatever.
Yep.
As far as open space that they classified as usable open space where people could congregate would be the minimum of 15 by 15 square feet to count towards that.
So in Lowell, if you have a five foot, you, they don't count that. That's just landscape architecture, that's not counted in.
Open space.
What do we count, Toby? Do we count landscape?
I'd have to refresh my memory. I don't go off the top of my head at the moment.
And the woman from Bussford also brought up how they view, or she tries to view open space as conservation space. Clearly in Lowell, they don't have too much conservation space going on their projects, but if we could better define as far as open space for conservation or passive use, open space for gathering that 15, 15 square foot, or, and then landscaped open space, because, I don't know, I'd have to go back and read ours, but it seems like it'd be better to have it defined than ambiguous.
Yeah, I'm not, I, it's been a while since I, we've had something that I've looked at that, but my recollection, it could be way off on this, is that, like, in terms of, I don't know that like for site, the language we have for site plan review, or like in our design bylaw, I don't know that we use the term open space. I'm thinking that we might use another term, but I'd agree with you, it'd be valuable to review and sort that out. I just, I'm not sure that we're, I think we do have definitions, but they're...
Because I know, like, when you do cluster development, there's...
Yeah.
10% or whatever.
Yeah, we use, I think we do use the term open space for that one.
Yeah.
And, you know, like, we ran into some ambiguities of language, I think, around some of the recent subdivision things, where it was like open space and park.
Yeah, what's a park, what's a...
Yeah.
I think it'd be helpful to accurately define that.
Yeah, yeah. But, like, in our design bylaw, when we were putting that together, and we were talking about things like landscape strips, I think we had another word we used. And then when we did the solar stuff, we had these buffer zones, which was another concept altogether.
Yeah.
But, so yeah, could, I support what you're saying totally, though. I mean, I think it'd be nice to square that away.
Put that on as an action item for Marion. All right. Meeting schedule. Our next meeting is at the town hall on December 9th at 6:30 PM, and then there's a question mark, December 23rd would be our next meeting in December. That would be the fourth Monday.
December what?
23rd.
December 23rd, wow.
Christmas week.
Christmas week. Christmas is Wednesday, Monday. I myself would rather not meet on, on the 23rd, but if you as a board would like to meet, I will be more than happy to do that.
If we do meet, I think we should have to wear seasonal colors, or maybe elf hats.
For the holidays. So what are, what are your thoughts? Or, you know, we could try to meet the week before, or I don't see that we have a lot right on our plate right here now for the month of December.
I want to know what bylaw you're referencing for that requirement. What bylaw you're referencing for that requirement for the Christmas meeting?
It may be though, that, so you said we have another one on the 9th?
The 9th is our regular meeting.
Okay, will that be, I mean, so if we don't meet the 23rd, the 9th will be our last meeting, I presume, for special, town special meeting?
Yes. So we would have to have our two, well, we already accepted those unless there's, we make that one amendment that you had talked of.
Right, so yeah, we could deal with that on the 9th, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with not meeting. I'm, I mean, I'm okay either way, but I guess...
Right, that's me. I'm, my preference is no, but we, I'm fine with that as well.
Yes.
So we're two...
Unless we want to do a workshop on our master planning, village districts?
On the 23rd?
Yeah, the thing is, I think, are we still, do we still have access to MRPC? So...
Yes, they still have to come back to us.
They still have to come back?
Do we have them to the end of the year, or was, I thought there's a time limit on that?
He, he even spoke of that, John spoke of that. I think they're coming on December 9th. I think MRPC comes in front of us on December 9th.
December 9th?
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, we don't have too many things on our plate, I don't think. So we could get away with not meeting, but...
All right, so Nathan, I'm sorry, Matthew wants to meet, Toby?
I can go either way. My preference would be yours.
Damon?
Oh, either way, I don't care.
Yeah, that's, all right, well, so there's, there's four either way, and...
Well, we seem kind of slow, so if we could, I just thought if we could take the opportunity to maybe talk about village district stuff, or just have a short meeting, or...
I'm very passionate about village district stuff. I question whether my head is going to be fully...
Well, that's for me, for that week of the holidays, I'm going to have 100 things on an action item list.
All right, I'm just trying to take advantage of why we have a lull, but...
It's great, but yeah, I mean, I want to give it the attention it deserves.
Exactly, and that's for me, you know, like I said, I'll come, but I know that, that we, everybody will have 100 things going on crazy.
All right, we can take the week off.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have decided...
Two weeks off. If you guys want to meet, I think you can. Two board members can meet to ski.
Two, just two, right?
If you guys can get together and really set this plate for us, set the stage for us, when we come in...
Subcommittee meeting.
There you go.
And on December 9th, when we meet back with Marion, if we have to meet for anything, we could do the next, you know, we could fill in a half hour throughout the month of December if, if we need to. So, as of right now, we'll just do December the 9th, but if Marion, when we meet again on the 9th, things come up, we can change that. Do I have any public comments? Anyone? Okay. Do I have any board comments?
I guess mine, board, I'm already, oh, member issue. We, didn't we two or three months ago decide to go through a chapter, a meeting on the rules, subdivision rules and regs? I have not seen anything about that.
Yes, we have. And I was just thinking of that when he said master planning, so...
One, we're taking days off, too.
I've, I've agreed to be docked my entire pay for the days I take off.
There we go. I'm, I will put that on as an action item for Marion. Any other board comments?
None.
All right, well, I wish you all a happy holiday, a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your family, friends. Be safe, and Matthew, member issue. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's okay. Oh, was, it was board comments is not member issues, or...
Yeah, now we're on member issues.
Now we're on member issues, okay, I'll wait until we get down to me.
Yes. Go ahead, Matthew.
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I asked for them, the, Kent Oldfield was at the last meeting, said that he would provide them, he would send them to Marion... meeting, said that he would provide them, he would send them to Marion, I sent her an email the next day. No, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't send it the very next day, I waited a few days to inquire if they had arrived yet. No response.
So you have not gotten any?
I haven't gotten any response at all from this person.
All right, so I'll add that to my list.
I'm not quite sure why it's on the member issues, but...
I don't know. Yeah, maybe she didn't get them. All right, I, I don't know, I can't speak, but I have it on our, our list. Okay, Toby, any members? Damon?
I'm good.
Nathan?
No, I think I'll save it for post-town meeting. Just, just some, some things first to think about going into the next year, some things I've talked about, I think I'm interested in talking about doing some planning as a board around looking into, I think we got a couple things to get over, but we need to get through town meeting, we got some important things for the town to consider there, related to the schools. School is a huge impact on planning, it's really exciting, the town has this, you know, opportunity to make a decision around that. After that one, we got our town center thing, so we probably got to square that away. Maybe in the context of the town center thing, it's not really a town center issue, but it's some, I just want to get people thinking about this, having gone to that, that planning thing around 40B and Safe Harbor, and, you know, are, I like board members to think about, are there opportunities, and you can talk to people if you want, that you see, in terms of, as Lunenburg's developing, where we might, you know, appropriately locate rental, rental housing projects, both, you know, affordable and, I don't know what the word for it, and not affordable. Market, that's the right word. Preferably a mix where there's 25% affordable. So the big revelation to me at that thing was that you do a project, you got 25% affordable, 100% of the unit count for a rental project will go against town, the town's Safe Harbor number, so that the town has, well, this is a little, for lack of a better way of putting it, full control of, you know, zoning and development. Yeah, exactly. And so, you know, I think, just think about, you know, where you think the town, are there places in town where there would be that, where it would be a lot of, you know, value to the town's development by citing such projects and for different reasons, there's a bunch of different reasons why I might, where the reasons you'd want to, where the reasons you wouldn't want to, and where would the good spots be? And, it's a, you know, something I just mentioned it now, just sort of plant a seed, so maybe if we pick that up in between one and six months, we can come into it with all, where we all have some head hat time to germinate some ideas and perspective on that.
Okay, sounds good. Any other issues?
Curiosity, I was allowed to attend the AGCOM as, was it advisory?
As an advisor, yeah.
And, and I don't, I'm wondering if it should be listed on the committee reports?
Oh, their reports?
Well, like MRPC, MJTC.
Oh, add, add the agricultural, yeah.
Wondering if that would be appropriate.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Did you guys, yeah, if you, maybe, I mean, I don't, I don't think there'd be any harm in having a report, even though it wasn't on the agenda, do you?
Yeah, no, was, is there anything new in there?
Oh, well, nothing new, really, there, there's...
Oh, we can't, yes, not on the agenda.
The board comment? No, okay, that's fine.
Pick it up on December 9th, we'll be looking forward to it.
On December 9th.
Sounds good.
You can backlog us.
They need more billing.
All right, if there's nothing else, I would accept a motion to adjourn, and again, have a happy Thanksgiving.
I move that we adjourn.
And have a happy Thanksgiving.
Second.
Aye.
Second.
Aye.
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 All right, have a good evening. Everybody have a safe, happy holiday.
Likewise, do my best.
How can I not with that here?